Person, it is recommended that individuals not vaccinated wear a mask. The first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. The next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Collins?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero. And for the record, please note that Ms. Smith is absent tonight due to a non-COVID medical quarantine, and Mr. Demodica is absent tonight due to a medical procedure. And just as a reminder, this is only our second in-person meeting in a long time. So, we will conduct our meeting in an orderly fashion, and we ask that everyone be respectful and stay away from disrupting the meeting. So booing, cheering, other things that may disrupt the business that we're doing, we ask that you refrain from that. And like last time, if I need to, I will give reminders about that. But let's just keep it respectful and allow us to conduct our meeting as we need to. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So item A, approval of minutes from special meeting 6/29/2021, regular meeting 7/15/2021, special meeting 8/5/2021, approval of minutes from executive session 6/29/2021, executive session 7/15/2021, the enrollment report 8/1/2021, school police report 7/1/2021, school bus inspection reports 8/1/2021, residency truancy report 8/1/2021, and the personnel actions, and Mrs. Dunkinson will read those to us.
Can you hear me? Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, I have a few items for you. First up, announcements for unpaid personal leave of absence. Christine Carpenter, Sarah Brady, Julia Marie Nickerson, Brooke Borges, Margaret Radcliffe, Michelle Cole, and Cheryl Webster. Second, I have resignations. Stephanie Amaral, paraprofessional. Bailey DiMarco, math essentials, McCourt. Sarah Godino, math teacher, McCourt. Danielle Placido, math teacher, McCourt. Next up is an appointment. Julie Alfano was appointed to the special education coordinator, district position for one year only. That is an internal promotion. Next up are new teachers for Cumberland, new teachers and support staff for Cumberland. Anne Ascar, kindergarten and community. Taylor Brooks, preschool teacher, special educator. Laura Hen, kindergarten, Garvin. Andrew Miller, PE, APE Health, North Cumberland. Christina Nicoletta, MLL math educator, McCourt. Katie Rotundo, kindergarten, community. Lindsay Pichette, special educator, success, DBP, McCourt. And Christian Whitaker, social studies. I don't have the school on that. I believe, oh, it's North Cumberland. Support personnel, Bethany Boisvert, paraprofessional, North Cumberland. Thomas Bocher, paraprofessional, Cumberland High School. Farah Garnum, paraprofessional, BF Norton. Deborah Ayen, paraprofessional, BF Norton. And Carrie Textiera, paraprofessional, North Cumberland. And finally, for coaches, Sean Connolly, who is a new appointment for cross-country at North Cumberland Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunkinson. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Collins? Second by Mrs. Rogowski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero. The next item on the agenda is report out of executive session meeting. Report out of executive session meeting on 8/12/2021. And then, report out of executive session votes. We did not take any votes in executive session tonight. The next item is a vote to seal minutes of executive session. I need a motion to seal the minutes.
Motion to seal the minutes.
Motion by Mr. Collins?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero. The next item on the agenda is the chairperson's report and a discussion regarding surveying of districts' masking policy with school committee chairs of other school districts. So something that I've done in the last few days or since our last meeting is I've reached out to all of the school committee chairs of the cities and towns across Rhode Island to see what they're doing, where things stand with them. And I've heard from many, most, not all. The majority of communities are in the process of either creating a masking policy or amending a masking policy. There were some communities that didn't have a masking policy at all, so they are starting from scratch. And anytime you create a policy, you have to have a first reading, a second reading, and then an approval of it. So those things can take some time. The only community that has voted so far is Foster Gloucester, and they have voted for parental choice in absence of a mandate by the governor. There are a number of communities that are looking at different ways of revising their policies, whether it's, some are looking at their policy being based on local CDC guidelines, recommendations from the Department of Health, recommendations from their consulting school physician. Others are looking for more direction from the state. We also know that there seems to be some discussion about whether the governor has, who has the authority to make such a mandate. So across all of these communities, it looks like the majority of them are trying to make a decision by the last week in August before school starts, which makes sense. And some, well, I heard from one that may be looking at putting some metrics in around transmission rates that may help determine when you do or when you don't. But I would say that the majority are definitely leaning towards masking and following CDC guidelines. But this is something that every town is dealing with, just as we are. And I just wanted to let you know that we're looking at that, and we're looking at our surrounding communities and the other communities across the state, just as, you know, another data point in this. Any comments from the school committee? Questions?
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Feather?
I just want to thank you for your efforts in researching all of this. I appreciate it. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Collins?
How many communities did you get in touch with?
I have...
Okay, so almost half? All right.
Yeah. And I'll keep this updated as we go. All the school committees are thankful to kind of look at each other and see what's going on. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, the school buildings renovation projects update. Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, good evening. We have work underway in several locations. First, I'll talk about the high school. The first location, we have a new entrance, a secure entrance, right back this way. So as you come into school this fall, you'll see a secure vestibule with a window and a place to kind of be greeted. You would then be let in to the high school complex. And the first stop is a new guidance office suite, followed by a special education suite. That's where a lot of the folks come to do business. That's why it was built that way. So right now, if you walk in there, the walls are up, they're painted, electrical is in, drop ceilings are framed, it's moving right along. It'll be ready for the opening of schools. That's really exciting, and happy to give you a tour if you want to see it sometime. Also, with security, you may recall, we have a metal fence structure on both sides of the wellness center, and that's been there. But we did have a situation where it was too high, so we lowered it down about a foot to make it more secure, so that was also accomplished. Also, with the high school, we have 25 classrooms getting new unit ventilators. There are, I believe, 14 math, 11 English, and that's moving right along. Also, at the same time, they did do new flooring in many of the rooms as the flooring was very old and had asbestos. That was all taken care of, and that's moving right along as well. Also, we'll be ready for opening day. Secondly, the trans building. As you know, the trans building is hosting our students at Cumberland Hill next year, and that work is moving along. We have 21 unit ventilators being put in in those locations, and that's moving right along nicely. Also, we have some new bathrooms going in over there in some of those rooms for the younger students. We also have a new secure vestibule. As you walk in now, the entrance of that location, you'll once again be in a box, if you will, with a second set of doors, so it's very secure, and that'll be ready for opening day as well. Our vendor did report to us, we have one delay. It won't affect our student locations, but the office for the principal and nurse will be delayed a couple of weeks per our vendor. So I did speak to the principal about that, and we have a solution for that for those two weeks. And we're also seeing the nurse early on to kind of problem solve that. Also, if you look over that way, we have a new walking path for students to go to the fields, and that's in place now. Next, you'll see a fence and a guardrail, and coming soon, also a playground. That's over that way, that's going in. Cumberland Hill, really, we're in the demolition phase right now. As you may recall, that's a new eight-classroom wing with a new secure front entrance, and that's all, right now, we're in demo mode. We did do a walkthrough there last week and really looked to do some more enhancements, things like having a standard protocol of each room for whiteboards. Some of the boards date back to, you know, 20 years ago. Now we're going to have a protocol. Each board is 192 inches long with a cork board on front and back, painting, some detail work, if you will. As you walk into a room, a lot of the classrooms have sinks from 1970 with some really old cabinetry. That's all being taken out, so that'll be made modern. So in short, right now, if you were to walk there, you wouldn't see anything happening yet. There's a lot of demolition, but as that goes along, I think you'll start seeing some things happening. Once again, happy to take your tour over there. We have weekly meetings on this work with all the vendors, myself, Mr. Prignano. We meet and go through all the punch lists, all the work that's coming in, all the problem solving, things that come up, and it's all moving along. But as you can imagine, we're very cognizant, the clock's ticking, it's August, and we have to open on time. So we are absolutely on that. So happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Thornton?
So is there any concern that the transition building will not be ready for the Cumberland Hill students?
No, the vendors have a three weeks out timeline. We went through it today again. The classrooms absolutely will be done, front entry vestibule will be done. The one thing they can't deliver on due to COVID and some delays is the front of the office, called the storefront, that'll be done. But behind the curtain, the office will not be done, so that is the one delay, just the adults. And the nurse location, we have a temporary location. It would be at the ground level of the trans building with a bathroom adjacent to it. That's our plan for that. But the classrooms for the kids will all be done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Collins?
You may have already said this, and I may have missed it. When will that be done? The front office, the nursing station?
They're guesstimating two to three weeks. Each week, we ask that question, and we look, you know, how they're progressing with their procurement of what they need to move along.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? Okay, well, that's exciting. Dr. Thornton, just a few more weeks away. And, okay, that's the end of your update, Dr. Thornton?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is reports of standing committees. The first is the fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. Collins?
The fiscal management subcommittee did not meet tonight. We did not have a quorum. We had nine resolutions on the agenda and the payment of bills in the amount of $1,982,756.5. But since the subcommittee was unable to meet, we're going to bump that up to the full meeting here later this evening, where we're going to vote on the resolutions. And Mr. Prignano is here to go over them with us.
Thank you. Policy and procedures subcommittee update, Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, Madam Chair, we did meet. On Tuesday night, we discussed four policies. The protective face coverings policy, which is, you know, of course, the mask policy, G-10 staff hiring, the K-12, I'm sorry, the K-8 proficiency-based grading policy, and also the brand-new Title IX protection from sexual-based discrimination policy, all of which will be on the agenda later in the evening.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is achievement and communication subcommittee update, and we did not meet this week. Next item is district health and wellness subcommittee update. Mrs. Rogowski?
District health and wellness committee did not meet.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the public hearing related to the policies that Mr. Fiorello just spoke of, so I'll hand this over to you, Mr. Fiorello.
I would just ask that, at this time, if I can make my... I would just ask that, oh, Jesus. I'm having technical difficulties. Please stand by. Yeah, I would just ask that F1 protective face coverings, G-10 staff hiring, and I-12 proficiency-based grading be read into the amended policies, be read into the record. Also, for the first time, please read A5 Title IX protections from sex-based discrimination into the record. And then, we would have public comment regarding these policies.
Okay. So this next item here, public comment, is related to these policies. After this specific policy public comment, then we will have our general comments from the public. So if...
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes, Mrs. Feather?
I just wanted to clarify, and I wanted to make sure that we do clarify that the amended F1 protective face coverings policy is only about authority to change policies.
Yeah, I'm going to explain.
Okay, I did, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that before public comment...
No, that's okay, I'm going to explain it more. I'll explain it in detail when we go to vote on it. But yeah, this is not about mandating masks. This is about the policy to ensure that the school committee gets the vote to do it.
Thank you, yep. I just wanted to make sure for the public comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Feather. So if anyone would like to comment on these policies, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and have your three minutes of fame. All right, so then we will close the public hearing at 7:26 PM. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public. This is our open public comments for the whole meeting. So if anybody would like to speak, come up, state your name and your address, and we do have a three-minute limit on public comments. And as is traditional for how we handle public comments, there is not a, generally, a response from the school committee. It's a chance for you to be able to say things to us, but we generally don't get into a dialogue with you during the public comments. But it does give you a chance to voice your opinion. So if anyone would like to speak during public comments, you can come up to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Brittany Shavz. I live at 97 Angel Road in Cumberland. I currently have four children in the Cumberland School District. It's simple, my children will not be wearing a mask this year, not in school or anywhere else. I'm sick of hearing from pro-maskers, "Let's just hang in there a little longer. Masks don't bother my kids," or "Let's wait until vaccines are available for kids, and then we can unmask them." Well, what we are learning is that even the vaccinated are still catching and spreading COVID. I know two people this last week who this has happened to. Odds are, this will happen to vaccinated children as well. So what's the end game here? Do we make them wear masks forever? When do we finally say enough's enough? Well, that day is today. We all need to stop acting as if masks are capes, that you're a superhero if you wear one and a murderer if you don't. People need to realize that respiratory viruses do not magically disappear, especially from a piece of cloth made by Old Navy. My son was on life support from RSV and almost died. I didn't expect the world to shut down or people to mask their two-year-olds because of it. The world is not a sterile place. Didn't Fauci say masks don't work in the beginning of this anyway? Didn't he say masks could harm children's health? Yes, but then has his advice changed to suit a bigger agenda? We should not be listening to the advice of the guy who helped fund the making of this virus in the first place, nor should we be listening to the CDC whom we didn't elect. As for our country's open borders, this new administration is allowing hundreds of thousands of people in, with 20% of them COVID-positive. Sorry, but I will not give up my children's freedoms for this administration's ignorance. If they're not so worried about COVID, then neither am I. Let's teach our children how to live healthy lives by eating right, taking vitamins, getting a good night's sleep, and daily exercise. This alone will help them with COVID and any other sickness. After all, that's what our immune systems are for. I urge you to make this parental choice. And if you really want to get back to normal, then stop complying and shut the damn TV off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Cutlip. First, I want to just thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight. You know, this is a very emotional time for a lot of different people, for a lot of different reasons. First and foremost, once again, thank you for your service to your community. You stepped up when, quite frankly, from my understanding, not a lot of people were willing to. So a lot of things have been said this week, but I do want to make sure that you understand, I do appreciate your service to our community. With that said, I'm a 17-year resident of Cumberland. Quite frankly, this is the last place I want to be. This is the first time I've ever really spoken up, first time I've ever contacted an elected official. I'm here not to speak about masks, regardless of what my feelings are on them. If you tell me my kid has to wear a mask, regardless of my feeling about it, I'm a rule follower. That's what I'm going to do. But when that decision is made, that decision is made based on me trusting in you, trusting as a fellow member of the community. Regardless of what has been said over the past week and done, there are a percentage of parents in this community that feel deceived by your body, right, wrong, or indifferent. Ms. Rogowski, I want to address you directly. I don't agree with what has been said about you. You are a mother, a wife, a daughter, and a member of our community. So I want to make that known to anybody that will listen. But what I do need to know, whether you choose to answer as a body or as individuals, how we move forward as a community and deal with the parents that feel, right, wrong, or indifferent, regardless of how we got here, feel deceived. There's no way about it. We feel deceived. So how, as a body, do we move forward? I want to be able to trust you. I want to be able, like I have for the last 17 years, to trust the members of my community that I see at Dave's, that I see at CYSA, that I see at schools, that I see sitting in traffic on Mendon Road. I want to be able to look at them and say, you know what? I don't agree with you, but I think that you are acting in an honest manner. And I, right now, don't feel that. I took the time to take the emotion out of it, and I didn't email any of my elected officials until, I believe, Tuesday night. I heard back from some of them, one of them extremely disappointing, extremely disappointing. Pointed a finger at me, told me I was the problem. So that really disenfranchised me, but it also led me to make sure that I came here and spoke my mind. So when the topic comes up on Section 12 Subsection A, and you all stand in support, which I would do for my coworker, quite frankly, especially given the set of circumstances. But when you do that, you also have to understand that there is a situation and an issue that needs to be addressed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cutlip. You've run out of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlip. Any other public comments? Welcome, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Jeff, Monta, 12 Scotia Drive. I'll fumble my way through it. And I apologize, we just had a meeting, so I don't know what was just discussed. But as I said in the council meeting, we don't, you know, one of my favorite famous lines is, "Four people on a Wednesday night are going to vote for something, and then we move on to the next thing." So we don't necessarily have to agree on everything, but I think as elected officials, we have to agree that some of the commentary that was aimed at Ms. Rogowski is absolutely out of bounds. That, you know, I have no problem with people taking shots at decisions I've made, comments I've made. That's part of the deal. Can certainly question whether or not, you know, I'm telling the truth, or... Anything is pretty much fair game. But when we don't speak out, and I don't believe anyone in the audience was responsible for the one that really sent me over the edge, but when we don't speak out against that, then we're supporting that. And there's absolutely no, I want to be on the record, as I was tonight at the council meeting, that there's, you could be my worst political enemy, and I would be here tonight saying that that can't be said about you. So I just clearly want to be on the record that, yeah, I don't know what the litmus test is for everyone's vote, but I hope that litmus test is for everyone that they've ever voted for, or everyone that they're going to vote for. That's what, I'm all in on that litmus test, but it's got to be universally applied. Today, it's all about the end justifies the means. If we want a desired outcome, anything that we need to do to get it seems to be okay. That's what it seems to be. And it has become fashionable that that's how we play our politics today. And as I said in the council meeting, I would hope that we work to make that not be fashionable. So I appreciate your indulgence, thanks. And by the way, I just appreciate all that, all elected officials. I mean, we are under scrutiny, it should be that way, we need to be accountable. But I know I haven't, in my 27 years of involvement, I haven't said thank you enough for the people who go through that experience. It is a great experience, by the way. I've met a ton of great people I otherwise never would have got to meet, have learned a whole bunch. Like I say, a lot of people would say I didn't learn enough, but it's been a great experience, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hello. I'm David Elliott, 97 Angel Road, Cumberland. I had a whole speech written. It doesn't matter. I mean, we all have different opinions of everything. What we, as parents, we have four kids in the community. We don't want to prolong this vote because we need to make plans otherwise, because our kids aren't going to go to school if they're wearing masks. So, when you say the week before voting, that doesn't give us much time to get homeschooling ready for four children. So, is there any way to speed this vote up? I mean, it's, I'm sure everybody has their vote already figured out at this point. I mean, what are we waiting for? I mean, the next meeting, can we do it? You guys all know which way you're going to go at this point, correct? I would imagine. It's obvious, some maybe not, but we, as parents, deserve to know so we can plan and not just be blindsided, you know? So, if you could, you know, try to get the vote for us so we can plan accordingly. It'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Any other public comments? Thank you. Mrs. Bolio.
Hi, folks. Lisa Bolio, 196 Heinz Road, I'm the District 3 Representative for the Council. Just wanted to make a few remarks. And out of my experiences on the council and on the school committee since 2006, I have never seen anything so egregious as what had happened. And apologies to all those involved. I think it was inappropriate, offensive, and it's very difficult when you target the newest member of any elected body within a community. You know, just wanted to say that I, I'm sorry that it happened. It wasn't me. But having had the experience of having to be accountable to the community, accountable to people who disagree with me, accountable to people who agree with me, it was a very difficult circumstance for you to be in, Ms. Rogowski. So, I want you to know, if there's anything I can ever do to help you, please let me know. I'd also like to let the committee know that I don't feel like I was deceived, and I think that's important. As folks have said, you represent me. I am electing you. I want you to do the best job you can. And again, we don't always agree, and they don't always agree with my position, but after having looked at whatever was available, I don't feel deceived. So, if that serves as anything, I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bolio. Mr. Denon.
Hi, Bill Denon, 27 Old Meadow Lane. I don't know if I can do a better job than what Mr. Mutter and Mrs. Bolio said. Everyone brings their own perspective to all of these things. I bring a perspective of a resident taxpayer and a former school committee member. I've sat up there on the stage with some of you. I've worked with many of you, and I know you're here for the right reasons. After, and I feel that needs to be said, you're all here because you support our students. You're here because you want to help the schools. You're here because you want the best for our kids. At the same time, you know, the public holds you accountable to make sure you're spending the money right and caring for our facilities. Those are all things that we expect. I want to say publicly that I trust all of you to make great decisions. I, after what we've seen on social media and blogs, I think some people don't realize the hard work you put in and where your heart is. So, I just wanted to get up and say that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Denon. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comments? Thank you again to everyone who came out and did speak, you know, in our, again, second in-person meeting, and thank you to everyone for exercising your right to be able to do that. We will now move on. The next item on the agenda is old business. And the first item is report out on resolution of claims and extension agreement with Durham Bus. And Mr. Adams, you'll update us on that?
Sure. So, this is, can everybody hear me? This is mostly for the public because the school committee is very familiar with the issue that arose with Durham Bus. It arose about a year ago, right in the middle of the beginning of COVID, in which Durham made some claims against the school committee informally. This was not a lawsuit or anything like that, but it had to do with payments that Durham felt it was owed in relation to the beginning of the COVID situation, when the school department had to shut down because of Governor Raimondo's order. And it also had to do with several years in which Durham had agreed to forego payments it was owed because of school budget issues with the agreement essentially that those monies would be paid in later years. And so, through a course of discussions with Durham, the school committee, discussions with the school committee, with Mr. Pregnano and me, with Durham, we were able to hammer out actually an agreement with Durham that resolved all of their claims and also, as part of that agreement, extended Durham's contract by two years. That was part of the consider, what's called consideration in what lawyers do, the payment essentially, for Durham waiving the monies that it alleged it was owed. I mean, it was, this was all done before any litigation ensued in order to protect the taxpayer dollar from a lawsuit. So, ultimately, the school, I kept the school committee involved pretty much every step of the way in executive session. One of the things that can be done during executive session is to talk about litigation that might occur with the school department. And the school committee eventually authorized us to work out the deal that was negotiated. And essentially, this, you know, there's no longer any, anything hanging over the school department's head in terms of monies that might be owed to Durham. We have a, an extension of two years, which actually pushes the contract for three years. And the rates are still favorable to the district, at least in comparison with many other districts, but the rates have been increased in part to make up for the monies that were owed, that were definitely owed, and there were definitely monies that were owed, that were historical, that were going to be paid in subsequent years, including this one and the next one. But now, those monies will not need to be paid. The agreement has been reached, and we have a deal to have Durham Bus continue to serve as a vendor. In that respect, there were several things in that contract that were important to the school committee, some metrics for Durham's performance, some ways to sort of hold everybody's feet to the fire, to try to do a good job to make sure that students are delivered to schools and to athletic events and things on time. And when those things don't happen, the parties are supposed to get together to try to resolve those differences and make it as good as it can possibly be. It's never going to be perfect, because when you're transporting anybody, there's always an accident in front of you that you didn't expect, or a traffic light's out, or whatever. But that is the snapshot, and we're reporting on it in so much detail because we were not able to report out the votes that were taken in executive session, because part of our strategy was if we reported all this out, then Durham would know what we were planning to do, and that's never a good way to go. But ultimately, the claims are all resolved, and away we go. So, it's a, it's a good result for the taxpayers, a good result for the school committee, and efficient use of time.
Mr. Collins?
Just for clarification, there are built-in provisions that penalize Durham for missed runs because I... It's cost prohibitive, obviously, but Durham's checkered history with Cumberland missed runs, forgetting kids on field trips, athletic events, doubling up on buses. Before COVID, it was probably the number-one complaint that I think a lot of us received. So, as long as there are built-in provisions, though, financial incentives for them to actually do their job.
Yep, we have, and I, I'm, I don't know whether we should, you should be happy or proud of it, but in the scouring of various agreements with vendors, including Durham, and, for example, First Student is another vendor, there are not really any, many damages provisions in the contracts. This contains what's called the liquidated damages provision, where, you know, when they miss a run or they're late by 15 minutes or something like that, there is just a payment that is made. And so, basically, a refund, if you will. So, that is baked into the contract. And, I mean, there, you know, invariably, in the event that everybody thinks that just because there's a damages provision, it's going to be perfect, it's never going to be perfect, because the transportation of 4,500 kids to and from school is going to contain some challenges, and I'm not saying this is like Durham's representative. I'm your counsel. But yeah, that's a good thing to have, and those metrics will be there to help the district and, I think, hold their feet to the fire.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Adams? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Next item on the agenda is discussion and revote to approve amended policy I-12 K-8 proficiency-based grading. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, this policy was written by Mr. Demana and his team over the past, I would say, probably a year and a half to two years. It's been worked on. This policy did come up, I don't even remember when, about a month or so ago. There was some confusion as to the layout of the policy and whether or not we should actually split the policy into two separate policies. What we have done is we are having one main policy for K-8. It'll be broken down into two sections, the original K-5 portion and the new 6-8 portion. None of the language has actually changed from the presentation that achieving subcommittee saw or that was discussed in policy in a previous meeting. It's just the same exec policy, just up now for a vote. And I would make a motion to approve I-12 K-8 proficiency-based grading policy.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve I-12 K-8 proficiency-based grading. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogowski. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it five to zero. Next item on the agenda is discussion and revote to approve the first reading of the new policy, A-5 Title IX protections from sex-based discrimination. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, this policy was worked on by Mr. Adams and his colleague, Tim Groves, and they've done a lot of work on this policy. This is a policy that we really needed to have, which we did not have. Actually, I'm going to let Mr. Adams just give you a brief rundown of the legalities of the Title IX policy, and then I will further explain it.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. I appreciate that. Deep down somewhere, but maybe not on the surface. So, for those who don't know, Title IX is a federal law that makes discrimination, and this is the way the law is written, on the basis of sex, illegal. Folks will think of things like girl's sports as a place where Title IX has been very useful. Brown University was one of the, one of the schools that really brought Title IX to bear nationally for everyone. So, that's one of the reasons that we have a little more equality than we used to have. I guess that's probably the best way to say it, because it's still a work in progress. But Title IX requires all public schools to have a Title IX policy, and we have not, and now we do. Well, now I'm hoping that we will, so that work is done. This policy, it involves more than sports. It involves any sort of discrimination on the basis of sex. So, it could include harassment or sex discrimination. And this policy is designed to give a mechanism to deal with those challenges when and if they occur. One thing I will say is that the policy as written is based a little bit on the last presidential administration's Department of Education's guidance, which entailed a little more, in some circumstances, thorough procedures for hearings and so forth if there is a claim of sexual discrimination. Unknown what will happen with the current administration, because I think some in the, in this administration have a slightly different view on that specific issue. But right now, the policy complies with what the Department of, US Department of Education requires. And it's an important policy to have, obviously, leaving aside the fact that it's really required. You have to have something like this to provide, you know, guideposts for the folks that work in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. It's important to note that although we have not had a Title IX policy specifically, a lot of these issues were addressed in other policies, and now the work will be to clean up those policies to make sure that they're in line with this new policy. The only, we did make a small change in policy the other night, which is in the version that we are voting on tonight. We just removed Mr. Demana as the point person, and it's just going to be generically the Assistant Superintendent's office. This way, we don't have to update the policy every so often, and this way, it'll just be a standard. So, I will make a motion to approve A-5 Title IX protections from sex-based discrimination.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it five to zero.
So, just to clarify, this was just approving the first reading, so this policy will become active if and when we approve it at the next meeting.
Yes, thank you. Okay, the next part of the agenda is new business, and the first item is discussion and revote on supportive school committee member Amy Rogowski. And I'll introduce this, and like you heard tonight already in some of the public comments, you know, in light of recent events, we, as a school committee, want to show our support for each other as a school committee and that we won't tolerate personal attacks. We may not always agree, and I'm sure many of us have faced public outcry at some of the decisions that we've made or some of the comments that we've made. But it's important, at the end of the day, that as a committee, we still support each other as members of the Cumberland School Committee. So, this discussion is just a show of support for what has happened in the past week or so with Mrs. Rogowski. And if there's any other comments or discussions that anyone would like to make?
I'm sure.
Mrs. Feather?
I've just written something brief that I would like to share as well. I just want to offer my complete support to Mrs. Rogowski because, well, what was publicly done to her last week was horrific. It was chock full of inaccuracies and highly inappropriate. Amy is a very good person, and she's an honest person. She's well-known and a respected member of our community, and she needs to be treated, and we all need to be treated with dignity and respect. I stand by her, and I trust her completely, and I trust everyone on our school committee completely. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Feather. And just to clarify, this item is to show support for Amy. It doesn't necessarily mean that we all agree with, with how Amy, what Amy may say or what Amy may vote on, but we are all elected to do the best jobs that we can, and we need to support each other. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, I too would like to offer my support to Mrs. Rogowski. What happened last week is really just not excusable. Yes, as Mr. Mutter expressed, being elected officials, we are absolutely subject to public scrutiny and should be criticized if people see fit. But the types of personal attacks were just really unnecessary. I think we can all agree that we can disagree in a respectful manner. And this goes beyond Mrs. Rogowski. This goes for all of us, really. I mean, I've served on this committee for nine years with Mr. Demonic, and I can tell you, Mr. Demonic and I have not agreed. And we have had arguments in public sessions before, but at the end of the day, we always knew that we were here for the right reason. We had the right end goal in mind. We just disagreed, and that's fine. We just, you know, we voted, we moved past it. And I'd also like to say that Mr., while we were sitting here, Mr. Demonic sent me a text message from his undisclosed location. I'm not really sure where he is, but he just wanted to make sure that everyone... But he just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that Ms. Rogalski had his full support as well. So thank you.
Mr. Collins?
I would start by saying I like, obviously like Amy, support Amy. I've talked to Amy quite a bit over the last week. There's a certain amount of abuse that comes with this job. You know, we know what we signed up for. I always tell people, you know, and I already told my family, I'm like, you may hear things, and they're okay with it, as long as it has to do with the job. A year ago, you know, we had a lot of controversy almost to the date. I personally took a lot of views for a vote I made. I was fine with it. I talked to a lot of people. They said, one guy called me to call me an idiot. I said, you call me at eight o'clock in the morning to tell me I'm an idiot? Okay. I just told them, don't vote for me. And with one issue, people get real worked up. But that doesn't mean you won't need me or Amy or Mark or carry anybody else on another vote. There were people a year ago who couldn't stand me, but they agree with me maybe now on certain things. That's part of the business. But a year ago, where I drew the line was when a member of the community posted my address online on Facebook with the caption, "Go get him." In that situation, it crossed the line because my family was scared. And I reached out to many people who were criticizing me. The one individual who did that, he knows who he is. Naturally, when I reached out to him, he didn't want to talk, didn't have the time, textbook. Whoever did this to Amy, and there are people, there are people here tonight who articulated constitutionally protected arguments against why they aren't happy with what Amy did. That's okay. People have done it to other members. But where you cross the line is where you go after family. And that's when you get nasty. What are you going to accomplish by harassing somebody's family? You're going to change the mask policy because you went after somebody's husband or my wife or my kids? So, I mean, this is maybe, as the mayor alluded to, this is kind of like the new way of handling business, but I just hope people show a little more restraint and articulate. You know, if you've got an issue, just reach out to us. I talked to a lot of people this week, a lot of people, email, on the phone. That's what we signed up for, that's what we do. Because it's not just about this vote, it's about building relationships and forming rapport with the community so people know who you are, so we can collectively move the schools forward, because that's what we're here to do. And I honestly think, you know, who knows what the impetus was for what Amy did and where it started? People had criticisms, but we don't even know if it was members of this community. It seems like people from outside of Cumberland created this firestorm and people harassing her who aren't even residents of Rhode Island. So it's unfair, it's part of, it's part of just the way things seem to be, the polarization of just people's opinions. But I honestly think cooler heads will prevail. I think the mayor said earlier, four votes and then you move on. So whatever we decide in a couple of weeks of masks, half the town will be happy, half the town will be upset, and then we move on to other pressing issues. But the goal is always to move the schools forward. What are you going to accomplish by going after one member? Force her to resign? We still have business to do, you're not accomplishing anything. So, I support Amy, I appreciate, you know, her coming here tonight, it was really important that she show up, and, you know, we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Fiorello?
I just received a text from Ms. Smith from an undisclosed location, and she just wanted to make sure that we expressed her full support of Amy as well.
Yes, I was going to add that, too. And I also just want to say that we also, of course, appreciate people who exercise their rights and come to these meetings and give their public comments and email us and ask us questions. I mean, that's certainly not what we are talking about here. We do not conduct our business on Facebook. And after this week, I may never go on Facebook again, and it's probably better that way. So, if you don't see any of us or some of us engaging on Facebook, that's not where we conduct our business. This is where we conduct our business. So the discussion tonight, or the vote tonight, is in support of Amy and ensuring that we are showing our support for each other and that we're not tolerating personal attacks, as Mr. Collins so nicely stated that. So would, so that, I feel like that is what we wanted to make sure that we could address tonight and say. And I thank Mr. Mutter, and I thank Mrs. Bolio, and Mr. Denon as a former school committee member for also coming out and showing the town's support for Amy. And thank you all for that.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Thornton?
I just want to commend the group. Being on the school committee is, as you know, a difficult job, and for the public, you see, you know, these folks aren't doing it for the money, certainly. I interact with these members on a daily basis, weekends, nights, morning. It's truly, you know, here for the greater good. And I just want to commend you all for taking this position. I think it is important to call out really bad behavior when you see it, and you've done that. So, well done.
Okay, the next items on the agenda are normally mostly covered in our fiscal subcommittee, but as Mr. Collins said, we didn't have a quorum tonight for that. So we will need to address these all as part of our open meeting, and we have nine resolutions, and Mr. Collins will take us through those. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
All right, the moment everybody's been waiting for, resolutions. Mr. Brignano's going to help me out here. The first resolution is SCPR-08 2021-42. This is a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to authorize payment number one for $30,685 to ADS Construction Incorporated of East Providence, Rhode Island for the indoor portion of the high school security project totaling $262,500. This is coming from the town lease or designated capital reserve. Mr. Brignano?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Collins, and good evening, everyone, and great job with your earlier action in supporting Amy. Yeah, this resolution is the, as you know, there were two pieces to the high school security project. There was the outside piece where you see the gates and new entranceway. And then what we got thinking was to really make it a, you know, which would really fit in with the security project, was what Dr. Thornton alluded to a little bit earlier, with moving guidance and special ed into an area of the building where they were isolated because the high school principal believes about 90% of the traffic that comes into the high school is for those two areas. So you're, you know, you're basically shutting off people who can go up, you know, if you know the high school, the different, there's a million different ways to go all over the building, so. This piece of the project is coming out of money that we had from last year's surplus in the budget. The $262,500, $262,500 was for the indoor work. This is the first payment of that. So, as you heard, Dr. Thornton wanting to give people tours, it's just about done, and this is, you know, we're just making the first payment. So, this, we should make this payment, and there'll be, you'll see some rapid other payments now as he's finishing, come down the pike on this project.
Okay, so with that, I would move passage of SCPR-08. I'm sorry, anybody have any questions? Okay, and with that, I would move passage of SCPR-08 2021-42.
Okay, we have a motion to approve SCPR-08 2021-42. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Feather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it five to zero.
Next up is SCPR-08-2021-43. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to authorize a change order to ADS Construction Incorporated of East Providence, Rhode Island to add the alternative HVAC work and to include the special education room for the high school security project in an amount not to exceed $57,539. And this will come out of the capital reserve fund balance.
Just, yeah, this goes along with the, you know, the project I just described. What we did when we first bid this out, we bid it alternates, and the HVAC piece, the air conditioning of the special ed room and the guidance suite was an alternate that we did not pick up originally because we wanted to make sure we had enough money to complete the project. We do have this money, and we now want to pick up this alternative and put in the cooling and heating system in those two areas.
Okay, with that, I would move passage of SCPR-08-2021-43.
Okay, we have a motion to approve SCPR-08 2021-43. Do we have a second? Second. Mrs. Feather, second, Mrs. Rogalski, second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion?
I just want to say, what a huge difference it's going to make for families. They won't have to come in, you know, traipse through the entire building, they'll be able to walk right in, go into who they need to see in an air-conditioned space. Speaking as someone who has to go into those rooms every so often, it's going to be nice for parents to be able to be in an air-conditioned space. It'll also be much easier for anybody with any kind of disability or anything, because it's going to be right on the first floor. So, this is a great step forward overall.
Well, and the other positive to this is it's going to free up, right now, some of these offices are actually occupying classrooms in the high school because there's no space for them. They're moving down into this new revamped area, will open up those classrooms, which we're offering CTE programs to other students, you know, and that the, we're losing, we're losing for the transbuilding for the high school students because that's going to be an elementary school for the next several years as we renovate our elementary schools. So, you know, there's a bonus of also picking up additional classroom space by doing this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it five to zero.
Double check here. Next up, we have, let me see here, SCPR-08-2021-45. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to, oh, I'm sorry, 44? Got ahead of myself. Should have stapled these. SCPR-08 2021-44. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to authorize a change order to ADS Construction Incorporated of East Providence, Rhode Island to replace the carpet in the new special education room for the high school security project in an amount not to exceed And this will be made available from the town lease.
Right, this is, and between the 262 that I described, the original project, and these two change orders, it'll bring the project up around 320, 323. In the original RFP, the carpeting was for the new guidance suite was called for. For some reason, the architect didn't include the carpeting in the special ed area. The carpeting, when Dr. Thornton, if he takes you through this week, you'll see is in terrible shape in there. If he takes you next week, it'll be in really good shape because they're going to hopefully install the new carpet. But we thought, everything's going to be done, why would we, for $3,900, leave an old tatted, ratted carpet in that new area?
Okay, with that, I would move passage of SCPR-08-2021-44.
We have a motion to approve SCPR-08 2021-44. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? The ayes have it five to zero.
Next, we have SCPR-08-2021-45. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to issue a purchase order to Sage Environmental of Pittuckett, Rhode Island for environmental services for Ashton, Garvin, and Community Schools in an amount of $6,000. And this will be coming out of the $79 million bond.
Right. What this is, this is for, this company Sage will basically, those three elementary schools will be the schools that'll be worked on next year, next summer, once Cumberland Hills complete. And so they'll start the work of doing research to look into, you know, if there's going to be additions of stuff added to those schools. You have to look at soil and the, you know, the footprint of where the school sits. And so, they'll do research and stuff to see, for example, they might find out 100 years ago, there was a farm there, and there was all sorts of pesticides, and that will require some type of action possibly. And so, it's $2,000 a school, and they'll do the research and stuff to find out exactly if we're okay and what might have to be done to proceed further.
Just hope they don't find a spotted salamander or ancient Indian burial ground or something like that.
Well, just build a new school somewhere else.
Don't have the money for it, Alex. Anyway, with that, I would move passage of SCPR-08-2021-45.
Okay, we have a motion to approve SCPR-08 2021-45. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Mrs. Feather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it five to zero.
Next is SCPR-08-2021-46. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to award a contract to TRC Environmental Incorporated of Weymouth, Massachusetts to perform hazardous building materials inspection, testing, design, and abatement remediation monitoring services at Ashton, Garvin, and Community Elementary Schools in an amount of $162,978. And this will be coming out of the $79 million bond.
Right, as we do the work in those schools next year, we know there's going to be abatement work that's going to have to, for hazardous materials. For example, we know in those schools, Mr. Fiorello and Mrs. Freeman and others were on the committee when we removed all the asbestos flooring in those schools. But caulking in windows and stuff like that, that is hazardous waste, hazardous materials, it's going to have to be addressed. The budget and the bond was about just under $225,000 for this work at the three schools, and TRC's bid is $162,000, well within the budget.
Okay, with that, I would move passage of SCPR-08-2021-46.
We have a motion to approve SCPR-08 2021-46. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it five to zero.
Next is SCPR-08-2021-47. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to make a second partial payment to ENE Systems of Canton, Mass. for UNIVENT project for the main high school building in an amount not to exceed $333,836.87. And this will be coming out of the $79 million bond.
Yeah, as you recall, we're doing this UNIVENT project and replacing floors in those rooms because of removing UNIVENTS in both the main building and the transbuilding. Dr. Thornton talked about the 46 UNIVENTS a little bit early in his presentation. We, a week or so ago, we approved the first payments of this work, which was basically buying the UNIVENTS and some of their startup work. You recall that resolution for the two schools was about $441,000. This is the second payment on, this is on the main building, $333,000. And it includes, there was a change order that we did a couple of weeks ago when we found out that 14 rooms, the asbestos, the flooring was still hot. And we did a change order for the $200,000 to address that. So I would recommend on this ordinance, the $200,000 for the abatement is not coming out of the bond. That's, it wasn't in the bond, and we made the decision that we would find the money in our own budget to do that. We thought it was that important. So I would say that maybe we add, out of the $79 million bond and out of the designated capital reserve account for this $333,000.
Okay, so we have, we're going to have to amend this?
Well, I would just add the language that some of that money's also coming out of the designated capital reserve. It's about, it's just so, it's like $201,000. I don't have the exact dollar amount, but just to be, you know, accurate for the record. Because that portion was never due to, it wasn't in the bond. We, Dr. Thornton, myself, Mr. Fiorello, who's on the, who's on the committee with us, you know, we had made a commitment that we would remove all the asbestos flooring, and we, lo and behold, we did it. We thought we had done it in every room in the district, and lo and behold, we found out 14 rooms hadn't been addressed. We thought that was only right to do those rooms also.
All right, so I would motion to amend the resolution?
The fiscal note portion.
The fiscal note, SCPR-08-2021-47, to reflect that the $333,386.87 will be coming out of both the $79 million bond and the designated capital reserve.
And if you want, I can give you, I can, when I do the amendment, when Cindy does the change, before I sign it, I'll put the exact amounts out of each. It's about $201,000 for the for the abatement, and it'll be about $132,000 out of the bond.
And I would move passage of the resolution as amended.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-08-2021-47 as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it five to zero.
Next is SCPR-08-2021-48, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to make a second partial payment to ENE Systems of Canton, Massachusetts for UNIVENT project for the CHS trans building in an amount not to exceed $218,388.81. And this will be coming out of the $79 million.
All out of the bond. There was no, there was no abatement done there. No asbestos removal. If you notice the two resolutions, too, you notice the total for this resolution is at the trans building, $651,000. And it's 849 at the main building. That extra $200,000 was the change order to remove the asbestos flooring. That additional $200,000 is coming out of the regular Cumberland surplus, designated surplus.
I would move passage then of SCPR-08-2021-48.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-08-2021-48. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it five to zero.
Two more, we're getting there. Next is SCPR-08-2021-49, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to authorize a change order to ENE Systems Incorporated of Canton, Massachusetts, for installing isolation valves on 26 UNIVENTS, UNITVENTS at the main high school building in an amount not to exceed $9,243.24. And this will be coming out of the $79 million bond.
Right. And this was something that the, you know, it's not part of installation of the UNIVENTS. It really had nothing to do with that. This was something that, once the project got underway, the facilities department wanted to install these isolation valves so that if they ever have an issue with any of the UNIVENTS, they can, just what it says, isolate it to just that room and not have to drain the entire wing of the high school and stuff. And especially where we have expensive glycol and that type of stuff in these UNIVENTS now to prevent freezing, it just made sense to spend a little bit of money so that if we have maintenance issues down the road in any room, we can isolate it to those rooms. So this is more of a maintenance issue than a, you know, an installation of the UNIVENTS.
All right, with that, I would move passage of SCPR-08-2021-49.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-08-2021-49. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion? Mr. Fiorillo?
Yeah, we've been talking about putting these isolation valves in since several years ago, when we had the water, when we had a water break in one of these lines. But it wasn't practical to do it, cost-wise. And we always figured that when we did some work on these lines, we would put the isolation valves in. So it's great that these are being done.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it five to zero.
And finally, we have SCPR-08-2021-50, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to authorize a change order to ENE Systems Incorporated of Canton, Massachusetts, for installing isolation valves on 21 UNITVENTS at the CHS trans building in an amount not to exceed $5,514.48.
Right. And that's the same thing. It's just for the other building. And there's two of these resolutions for each of these, because the original contracts with ENE were two separate contracts, one for the main building and one for the trans. So when we're amending those contracts, we thought it wise to do the change orders separately also.
Okay. With that, I would move passage of SCPR-08-2021-50.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-08-2021-50. Second. We have a second by Mrs. Feather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it five to zero. Good job, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My honor.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote to approve amended policies. Mr. Fiorillo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First up is the ever-popular F1 protective face coverings policy. As you noted, last year when we did this policy, we were one of the first, if not the first, districts to institute a face mask policy. We did it specifically to give the superintendent emergency authority to enact a face mask policy if one was necessary. And at that time, that's what we were looking at. But now, we're in a different world. So we needed to make sure that not just the Emergency Act, but that it also had the support of the school committee. So the school committee will be able, will vote on an emergency mandate of the superintendent, but we would also be able to put it on any agenda to either activate or deactivate the mask policy as needed. And the school committee will be the final say in it, the way I believe that it should be with an elected official and not with the superintendent bearing the brunt of the responsibility. So that is the only change we really made. We also made some legal change wording with just stating the different state laws that give us this power and the responsibility. Also, it's important to note that the state repeatedly has said that they were going to offer some guidance. They really haven't, which is why this is being done in August and not in June. So I would move passage of F1 protective face coverings.
Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion to approve F1 protective face coverings. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Mr. Collins?
I actually want to commend Mr. Fiorillo and the Policy Subcommittee. Last year, they were very proactive with their mask policy. And earlier, during your survey, I was glancing at what you had sent us. Some districts are just letting it roll over. My concern with getting this policy on the books was that the superintendent could easily just, he has a policy, he still has those emergency powers. This has nothing to do with the masking controversy, quote un, you know, or no controversy. But I think it's really important, as Mr. Fiorillo just said, that, you know, when you give emergency powers under a crisis, eventually you have to take them back. Too often, they just become normal. So regardless of what happens with the mask policy, the decision will still sit with us because of this proactive policy. Other districts have just said, it's on the books. What are you going to do? You know what I mean? So I think we're being very proactive here. And regardless of what the outcome is, I think this is a good step forward to empower the school committee, as Mark said, as elected officials.
Any other discussion? I would just like to read the exact sentence. "The school committee shall place the superintendent's recommendation on the next school committee agenda for vote to affirm, modify, or reject the superintendent's action." Just to be clear. So the superintendent has the authority to enact the policy, but the ultimate responsibility lies with the school committee taking a vote to either affirm, modify, or reject it. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear with everyone.
Yeah, and that's basically the way many things work. The superintendent makes his recommendations, he offers his advice, he explains how he got to his, to his decision, and then it's up to us to actually vote yea or nay on it. So this is really just keeping in step with all of that.
And to Mr. Collins' point, the surveying of other districts, there are some who have not even had any kind of policy. And now they're trying to play catch-up on this, or they have some other policy that they're trying to amend this into. So we were really proactive in the state in putting this policy together last year.
And in all fairness, the easier thing to do would be just to put it on Dr. Thornton or wait for the governor. Well, you can wait in a while. Or you're going to be wait for the White House or whatever. But we're choosing to make a tough decision when we don't have to do that, because, you know, as we were alluding to earlier, that's what we were elected to do. So, and I appreciate you waiting until everybody's here, but there's seven members and there's seven votes. And let the votes fall where they may, but it will ultimately be our choice, even though that would not be the easiest for our, you know, well-being, probably.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it five to zero. Motion passes. Next item?
Next item is the G10 staff hiring policy. This was a policy that I think we put into place last year, just to clarify some hiring procedures. And during our negotiations with the teachers' union, it was, there was a question of how these, how certain promotions within the teachers would take place. And everyone agreed it did not belong in the contract, that it was a policy issue. So they asked us just to work up some language, Mrs. Duncanson did, and thank you. And this, the amendment to the policy has the full support of the union leadership. And they were very anxious to get this done so that they know in writing what the procedure is for these promotions. So I would just make a motion to approve.
Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion to approve G10 staff hiring. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it five to zero. The motion passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote to approve payment of bills. Mr. Collins?
I have a payment of bills invoice here for 2021, the amount, the fiscal year ending in June, the fiscal year 2020 to 2021, in the amount of $445,273.35. And for this current fiscal year, I have invoices totaling $653,001.30 for a grand total of $1,098,274.65. And I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to move passage of payments of bills for $1,982,000, wait, $1,982,274.65. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it five to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Do we have any comments from the school committee? Mr. Fiorillo?
I just want to point out, because there was very little volunteering last year because of COVID, anyone that wants to volunteer will need to update their BCI forms per state law. So they will need to get that done. They can talk to their PTOs. They usually have the necessary paperwork and information on that. And I would advise everyone to get that done sooner than later.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. Mr. Collins?
I just want to wish our missing colleagues, Mr. Demodica and Ms. Smith, well. They're battling some lingering health issues, but we look forward to having them back in a couple of weeks.
Any other comments from the committee? Okay, the next item on the agenda is vote to go into, oh, Mr. Collins?
No, I was quickly going to run a motion to adjourn.
Okay, hold on. Vote to go into executive session. Dr. Thornton, do we have executive session?
We do not.
No, we don't. The next item on the agenda is adjourned.
I would like to motion to adjourn.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at 8:30 PM. Thank you, everyone.